Are you all ready?
I'll, I'll, it goes with his presentation.
It is four o'clock and we will call the Curville City Council Workshop to order. Uh, do we have anyone who wishes to make public comments?
No ma'am, no one has signed up.
All right, we will move to number two. Mr. Hornis, take us away.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank y'all so much for taking the time this afternoon. Uh, excited to be up here to talk to you today, uh, about special district policy.
When in order, how come everybody has a blue suit on?
You know, I, I really only.
I have a phone.
You'll be surprised what Drew gets here, I don't know, maybe, maybe it'll, maybe it'll be tan.
Before you start off, I saw, I just happened to pick up the San Antonio newspaper today and I saw that the, the state's now having a posting place for all of the municipalities and all of the tax incentives that they're providing. Are y'all familiar with, with that?
So, we currently have to post, uh, all chapter three eighty agreements, uh, tax abatements, tax incentives, uh, online finance.
Yes, there's like a, I guess now there's like a.
There's a database.
Database now, right?
Yeah, there's a requirement in there. That came through from the last legislative session.
Okay, I just happened to see it in the headlines.
Or the comptroller's office, I can't remember which.
Uh, it was legislative session and then, uh, reporting to the comptroller's office.
Okay, I, it just, I, it just seemed to go a little hand in hand with what we'd be talking about, so I just thought I would throw that out there.
Well, all right.
Alright.
So, we have, uh, we've kind of talked about this a few times in executive session as well as, uh, had discussions about a, uh, a consultant that could help us work through some of these already. So, uh, we're working through this kind of in is, in order as much as we can, although, uh, some of those pieces I think fell prior to kind of where we are with the policy, this being a new thing for the city of Curville. Uh, so, what we really want to get out of today, uh, and we're, we're hoping, uh, from y'all is to give us some guidance on kind of some of those higher level pieces to, uh, to either of those policies, whether it's a PID policy or a MUD policy. So, why, first of all, are we talking about this? Um, there's a lot of areas of the Curville twenty fifty plan that either relate to housing or finding creative ways to help bridge the gap on commercial projects, whether it's retail or multifamily, uh, or building out that infrastructure that's, uh, in our thoroughfare plans. And so, really, that's kind of the why. That is dictated a lot by the developing community. They come to us and they say, hey, here's this really neat tool, can we use it? And they want to because that's a great way for them to either get paid back quicker or get paid back a little bit more, depending on what that tool is. Uh, for us, it's about what is that extra benefit? What is that, what is that thing about this development and their request that is in excess of what would normally come? Are they creating a better thoroughfare? Are they putting together a product that exceeds the minimum standards for buildings? As we all know, the ability to have masonry standards, as an example, was, was removed by the legislature. Well, when you have development agreements, you can bring those things back in, which may or may not be beneficial and may or may not be something that you want to do, but it's things like that that would be able to be included into that, that would exceed those minimum standards. So, really, and we've talked about this before, the two types of districts that are most common are public improvement districts and municipal utility districts. There are forty or so different types of districts, whether it's a school district, a water control improvement district, a crime control and prevention district, and there's any type of mechanisms that create those things, whether it's taking it to the voters for an election or taking it to TCEQ and asking them for that information. Really, what you see around cities more so is public improvement districts or MUDs. And sixty-five percent of the MUDs that you see are in Harris County and, uh, Fort Ben County? Right around Houston. So, I grew up all around MUD districts. That was just a thing that was, it existed and I had no idea what they was, what they were, excuse me, when I was a child. And now I know more than I could ever want to know, uh, about those districts. So, we'll get into public improvement districts first. Uh, so, we had a great presentation, uh, by the folks from UniCap not too long ago, so I won't belabor these points too much. Uh, but really, the, the point of that public improvement district, um, is, is so that those folks can levy a special assessment against those properties to help pay for that infrastructure that's contained within that district. What I would like to stress about this district and the MUD district is that these assessments for the PID and taxes for the MUD are only assessed within the geographic boundaries of that development. So, this is not an imposition of anything for citizens who already live here in Curville, who live outside of the boundaries of those districts. So, that's always a big one and those are questions that we've already gotten so far. What are those assessments for the PIDs, right? So, it's not a tax, uh, but how different is it? So, it is a, it is a static number that is given to that property. So, take a residential home, for example, that's at a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value. There is a total twenty-five thousand, twenty-four thousand dollar assessment on that piece of property. That residential property can pay off that assessment in equal installments over, say, twelve or twenty years for two thousand dollars a year or twelve hundred dollars a year. Or they can pay it off in one big lump sum. Now, other types of developments, like a multifamily development, for example, well, those would need to get paid right away. So, they wouldn't be able to defray that assessment over the co, over, over the course of those, those, those years. It's really within their power to be able to pay that assessment off quicker, uh, than it is for the residential developments. So, the distinction between the assessment and what we'll talk about later in the MUD is that that MUD tax is a fluctuating number. That just changes as, uh, the rates for a MUD tax would change over years. That assessment for a PID is a defined number and is static and you can depend on that throughout the years. Yeah, I'll just stop if you have questions or comments or anything. Uh, what are the types of things that we're going to be, uh, talking about using that PID for, uh, to pay for? Roads, water, wastewater, uh, drainage improvements, landscaping, those are kind of the big public improvement portions of it, but it also can pay for uh, quality of life, right? So, trails, uh, um, nice monuments, entry features, those kind of things. Uh, those can be paid for through those PIT ass, PIT assessments provided they're within the confines, again, of that geographic area. The distinction between those nice features and the, the public infrastructure is that if there is off-site improvements that are required for that development, right? Off, off this property, that PID can pay for it because it's required to build that, okay?
What, an example?
So, uh, let's say, uh, let's say my neighborhood, uh, wants to create a PID and they want to have, um, brand-new trail systems and, uh, and new sewer lines to go with it, because now there's five hundred extra houses. Well, the storage tank off-site or the lift station off-site can't handle that capacity. So, they would have to upgrade that lift station that's off-site away from that development, but that would benefit those tracks, right? And so, that would be the off-site improvement. Same for water. You, you probably would see it mostly water and wastewater, either in the, uh, lift stations or in the pumps. It's typically what you would see.
Thank you.
So, again, just kind of backing up, uh, even more so, uh, just reiterating, uh, for council and the public that may be, uh, watching this. The city doesn't build new roads as a general practice. The city doesn't build new water lines as a general practice. The city doesn't build new wastewater lines. New development pays for itself. The traditional model has always been the developer puts those pieces of infrastructure in and then builds that into the cost of lots, right? These models provide for, uh, or these mechanisms provide for a little bit different model in that the, the cost is not necessarily, uh, encumbered within the cost of the lot, but instead uh, afforded to the, the property owners within that development in a different mechanism, a different way, either through an assessment uh, via the PID or via, uh, some type of taxing, taxing mechanism to the MUD, which we'll get into later. And I know we provided you guys with a pretty extensive, somewhat boring presentation for a couple hours, uh, a few weeks ago. Yeah, exciting presentation, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so, folks are wanting to get, we're not going to dig into the details about the actual mechanisms today, because we went through that pretty extensively, but if folks are interested in that, they certainly can go back and watch that online, uh, and get, get educated as to the specifics of those mechanisms.
And really, the basic tenet of that whole concept is that in theory, the houses will be a little bit cheaper initially. They'll have to pay out that assessment over time, a little bit longer, so their monthly is a little bit higher, but that initial purchase price of that home should be reduced.
That assessment's a contractual obligation of the homeowner, the property owner with the developer, I suppose, or?
Well.
The developers assign, who are they to sign that?
So, that, so that is, is paid out, so it's paid out to, um, goodness. Uh, it, it comes along with their tax bill, right? It, it shows up in as assessment, it is not.
Who gets the money? The developer, are the developers assigned?
The developer, right? Yeah, so it's either, uh, bond repayment. Make sure I understand everybody's questions, right? So, the developer is returned on that, um, that assessment, right?
Is it considered a bond?
So, there are bonds, right? So, there, so, so can be. PID, PIDs don't necessarily have to be bonds, but typically what you see is they do put out PID bonds and they're, so.
They sell bonds, use it, the proceeds from the sale of the bonds to make improvements? And then they have the PID assessments to require the bonds?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And can you clarify what the board's role is in all that? Or is the developer indirectly kind of reimbursed or paid out of that or what? Because I remembered something to do with the board.
Is that a MUD or is that a PID or both?
So, so the PID board can be the city council. Doesn't have to be anybody other than that. And the bonds, so, so on a PID, the bonds can be taken out either pre-development or we can make, make, make it that the bonds are taken out after certain infrastructure is already installed. And those bonds pay back to the developer, help me out here.
Yeah, so typically, those bonds, if it is bonded, are going to go to reimburse, uh, the developer's infrastructure costs. However, those assessments are going to go back to, uh, the issuing entity. So, they, tho, those bonds may actually be issued by, um, the city, essentially. Now, they are separate, and again, remember, it's a separate, uh, from a liability and legality standpoint. Um, uh, and they're, they're actually, their, their rates are different because they don't have the full, uh, faith and credit of, of what the, the city has uh, from a property tax jurisdiction. But essentially, yeah, that is a, uh, it's a, it's a debt that is carried, uh, by those properties, essentially issued by the city. Authorized by the city.
Authorized.
And it's authorized by the city if the city is that, is acting as the board or either way, whether.
Either way, so we can build that into the approval that no matter what happens, the next set of PID bonds that come out, phase one is done, they need to go out for a second set of PID bonds, they come back to the city council and they get the approval.
And that's would be a provision or a clause that has to be included in the creation of that, right?
Correct.
And in probably, and what, what we'll have is we'll have that within the policy document itself.
Okay.
Right, so it's going to have a play-by-play for exactly what happens from the start of their idea that they want to build something in Curville to all the way down to they're going to put out the bonds, here's exactly what needs to happen.
Right, okay.
Thank you for, I mean, it's been a few weeks and, and we, we were getting a lot of information that night, so thank you for helping us.
Absolutely. Not sure I did, but I got EA here to help. So, those assessments can, can be paid in full if they want to. They can also just pay them out over time. And so, it goes with the land, not with the property owner. So, somebody pays off, let's say, half of that money over ten years. The next person who buys that house, they can pay it off all at once or they continue that payment until it's paid out. So, uh, direction that we are looking for, uh, today, um, and some of the things that you'll typically see in these policies throughout the state is kind of what are, what are the priorities? What, what are the things that you look, that you want to look for in a development uh, that are important to you that are kind of the policy pieces of this? You know, we talk about Curville twenty fifty all the time, so we, we talk about things needing to meet transportation goals, land use goals, uh, housing goals, quality of life goals. So, we had planned to put into that policy document several of those items that would help. If, if you're going to submit a PID application, you're going to put a PID request in. And all you're going to do is bring in X that meets next to none of those goals and you have a paid request. Well, I'm not sure. I think we'd like to have the document in place that tells you it's probably a waste of your time to come ask for that because here's what we're looking for. That's above and beyond, right? And I think Abdi spoke to that the last time, and I think, you know, we want to continue to reiterate that. What is above and beyond the normal, right? Because this is an exceptional financial tool that you would allow, uh, these developers access to, uh, by agreeing to this, right? Not an incentive that you're giving them, but just a, a, a really, really good financial tool that you're giving them access to.
State law allows for a very broad spectrum, uh, of improvements potentially. Uh, but council can obviously narrow that, uh, by policy to say, hey, we're, we're not going to look at this for just a five-acre tract or a ten-acre tract or, or sort of scale of development. It really needs to be something maybe larger. So, that's the kind of policy direction that I think would be helpful for us, because we can use that as a little bit of a filtering tool for the development community. Say, hey, councils are really, really kind of said, your ask isn't appropriate, and so it's probably not going to go anywhere. Or it is and, and progress, but progress within these guidelines.
Well, I mean, to me, the attainable housing piece is, is, you know, defined differently, but, but that's important, but but some of that's built into the structure of it, right? I mean, that should realistically lower the sales price.
It sh, it can, but I think it's, it, it gets complicated.
So, it should be named as something that would be, you know, if, if they're bringing home housing within a, an affordability level that, that would can't be met otherwise, for example?
Yeah, I think it, when projects that we worked on that are working towards attainable housing, I think have a larger component of contributions from the city. So, you've gone through examples of that, uh, already at least once, and those are kind of the mechanisms that we know to be really viable options for attainable housing, uh, for the ability for them to lower the cost of the product that they're selling, whether or not that ends up being attainable is.
True.
I think that's, that's a harder one to pin them down on when you're creating these districts.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have any PIDs in Curville as of yet?
We do not.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we do not have, there are no PIDs, there are no MUDs, there are no, um, there are no other real special districts other than, uh, tax investment, reinvestment zone downtown.
So, we're plowing new ground?
Correct, yeah, as you remember, um, you know, and, and really, the reason we're here is because we're getting these inquiries pretty frequently. Uh, and that's been a big change from, you know, what we talked about, uh, the, the development community, because of the popularity of these mechanisms, um, you have hundreds of them that have popped up across the state. Now, some of them are, are, are older, right? They're, uh, the, the, um, the ETJ MUDs, for instance, they've been going on as, as, uh, Mr. Hornis spoke to uh, for decades in Harris and Fort Ben County and other areas of the state. Uh, in-city MUDs and public improvement districts are really, um, they have really come on in the last ten years or so. Uh, and so, that, that is a piece that, um, it has, it's not new legislatively, it's just its popularity with the development community has changed quite a bit. And so, because we're getting these questions very frequently, we, we need policy direction from council on, on when they're appropriate and when they're not.
So, whether, rather than us trying to figure out the mechanism in, like, executive session, we're talking about it as a function of any agreement that may come forward and then when those conversations start with you guys, y'all know what level of comfort you can give some assurance to the developer coming in based on policy.
That's right, yeah, it would be pretty, I mean, a pretty well standard. We could, we could, depending on the size and the scope of that development, modify the terms of what they're doing, but this is a really, this is just the tool that I think not only they need as the developer, but if it's, if it's a PID, uh, they'll probably have a third-party administrator helping them work through that, because it's a specialized piece. Uh, and ours as well, um, and, and because there's so many facets to it, you really want to, we want to have as many of those spelled out as we can.
Right, and this is, I mean, this isn't like, it must meet this, 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 and this. This is like one of these areas. Like, it is going to provide a level of attainable housing, or it's going to provide for a quality of life that we don't currently offer, or it's going to.
And then it's their sales pitch to y'all. And, and does, you know, does that pass muster and, and do you agree with that? Staff agree with that? Does the assessment from, uh, you know, the professional coming to help, help us out with that feel that, uh, same thing? And we either move forward or say no at that point, right? They can, and their, their project can, can live or, or go, depending on, uh, their ability to take care of, without this. So, uh, transportation, housing, quality of life, all that, um, enhancements to the, the road, whether it's boulevards with divided medians that have an aesthetic feature or those subdivision and building standards, again, you know, in excess. And again, these are just concepts that we threw out, um, for, uh, to look favorable, favorably upon having more commercial components, so they have some sales tax that helps drive down the property tax, which is always a benefit, you know, if you've got a a five-hundred acre tract that's got commercial frontage, you'd want to have some commercial property in there, um, that has, that has some sales tax drivers in there. So, we, we, we've tentatively placed that in there as something that would be beneficial to their development if they, if it fits.
What do you mean by transportation? Like, building bike lanes or making regional roadways or, or what, what is meant by that?
So, if you look, if they, what we tell them is look at our transportation plans within the confines of where your property is located at, make sure you adhere to kind of what that future transportation plan looks like. And at least, you know, kind of a scope. And, and does it, is it helping meet a need that the community has? You know, whether that's a thoroughfare that's going to cut across your community or it's, uh, helping out with drainage issues that are happening somewhere else.
You, you recall, we've got a whole chapter on mobility and transportation in the Curville twenty fifty, and so, uh, we always point back, when we get questions from developers on what does the community want, we say, well, we've got three hundred pages right here in Curville twenty fifty, uh, tell us what you're looking at, and on in regards to mobility, we've got a whole chapter, so we've got a bunch of goals in there. And so, it would be tied off to those pieces. That way, we make sure that they're elements, uh, that they're achieving, that are part of, uh, the community's vision.
Okay.
So, some of the other things that, you know, we get development requests constantly, whether it's an acre, two acres, fifty acres, five hundred acres, uh, for any number of things. We want to make sure that if somebody's asking for something such as this, it, it at least meets a minimum. Otherwise, there should be a request for just about everybody. They'll be shocked at the price it costs to review their application, that probably will turn a lot of it away. But, um, having a minimum acreage size, uh, would be, I think, beneficial to all of us as we move forward with this. And again, what benefit is the development really bringing? You know, that's a big one that we want y'all to, to think through. If there's items that, that we miss in there, we want to make sure that, you know, they're you know, spelled out at least a little bit, doesn't have to be specifics, but, uh, what are the themes that, that, uh, you all want included in this policy document that, that drive why they should be granted their PID or MUD, whatever it could be? And then this one is, it, trying to find a, um, maximum annual assessment. And what I, what I've saw, what I've seen, excuse me, I can't speak very well today. Trying to put equivalent to the tax rate. So, as an example, if our tax rate is, is around fifty cents, then I've seen cities not say you can't exceed an additional fifty cents for your PID assessment, so that way that, that rate is not above a dollar. Same for, and we'll get into this within city MUDs, examples where the in-city rate would be something where you wouldn't exceed kind of an artificial cap of a dollar, right? And then in the, in the, uh, in the ETJ, not exceeding ninety-five cents or a dollar. So, that really just would put a cap on how much they would be able to assess, which, which ultimately helps them inform how they can, their finance plan.
Okay, when you were talking about the, and you, you were talking about how the assessments are paid out and that it's a static assessment? And then, so, within that, what, what does the future homeowner, developer, or board, or all three, or city have to do with how that assessment is, is levied as far as, as far as I'm going to buy this house, but I only want to pay, you know, a thousand dollars a year, or I'm going to buy this house and I want to pay it all upfront, like, where is the authority in, in that part? Because per, the, in the valuation is a fluct, fluctuating number, I, I'm just confused.
No, no, it's understandable. And so, in the MUD, uh, the MUD helps, um, you know, I'm sorry.
The MUD's, but, MUD is a.
MUD is a, is a floating number, right?
Right.
So, these, they have to make some estimates, right?
Okay.
So, they say that this house has a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value.
Okay, so when you say valuation, that's the assigned valuation that they're putting on it?
Initially on that, yeah, initially on that property. So, they make some assumptions. And as the development continues to build out with each phase, they'll make new assumptions with those new build-out phases. And so, each bond that would come back to the city as a request for, say, phase two or phase three, that'll have a whole new set of assumptions on, here's what these folks would pay in phase two. And the only thing that is probably, I, not the only thing, but one of, I think, the the sort of crystal ball, uh, concepts for the developer is you have a, usually what you'll have is a regional infrastructure piece and a phase one piece together in a bond, because they're going to build more of that regional infrastructure as they build phase one. And so, they make some assumptions about that part of it. But once your assessment is set, so if you're in phase one, somebody builds a house, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars, that is going to be the PID assessment for the entirety of that development. When you come into phase two, well, now here's your assessment, right? And so, they're not going to be phase one to phase three or four, may not necessarily be the same, but the value will be determined one time. And then it's set for that property until it's paid off.
So, whereas the, the MUD piece is a floating based off of actual property evaluations, those assessments is not. Uh, and so, that, because that does require that calculation up, up front, it is a little bit different, because you could see the value of a home go up. That PID assessment's still always going to be the same, and it's always going to have that same duration of term. That property owner initially can pay it off, uh, from the get-go, or they can pay it off over time, but that is all set uh, with the initial, uh, bonding term, basically. Um, and so, it, it does become a little bit of a piece of value, and it is a distinction between the PID and the MUD. And it's really kind of one of those policy components as, as you all evaluate whether PIDs or MUDs are appropriate.
Does that mostly answer your question?
Yeah, uh, that just, the, the way it was written there, the template of a dollar sign of a hundred valuation was confusing to me.
And really, it was because we were trying to get to that equivalency factor.
Equivalency, yeah.
Because we, what we have seen as we've researched other PID pol, or, or other MUD policies is that they will set a cap on the, uh, actual tax rate that the MUDs are able to charge, uh, and on, on, when they combine the city rate and then on top of that. Uh, and so, uh, we were trying to get to some level of equivalency between the two mechanisms.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Yeah, because that is set, yeah, okay.
So, what's, what's the downside to a PID?
I don't know that I can answer that question entirely. I think that's on a case-by-case basis, right? So, and the nice, the, the good part about, uh, well, the benefit to you all, right? Somebody makes a request for a public improvement district. The, one of the first steps that they have to do is, in addition to all the information gathering they have to get done, they have to submit all that information to us, and we've hired a third-party consultant to help us with that. So, they outlay, uh, a portion of that fund, they outlay those funds for us to review and make recommendations to y'all on the feasibility, the financial feasibility of this project, whether or not it's, uh, good for the community. Does it meet those criteria that we just talked about? And if so, then you get to make that determination, yes or no. If it comes back that it's like, well, no, this doesn't pencil out because they don't have enough funding, they don't have capital reserves, they can't handle this development on its own merits, well, then it helps to inform your decision to say no. You know, this is not a, this is not a good plan. So, it helps to mitigate that risk, because you do, all that, a lot of that due diligence is taken care of on the front end. Because what we require, they turn in their financials, we require they turn in all their concept plans. How much are they going to be able to pay for initially on their own? How much are they going to require the PID to pay back? What, if any, asks do they have of the city, right? And we're going to ask for a lot of specifics in regards to, well, what are your development standards going to look like? What does that community benefit? What portion is going to be commercial, right? What are those standards going to look like? So, we can get pretty granular and pretty specific with them, uh, before it ever comes back to you all to say, okay, here's, here's what we think the concepts look like, we think it's a good idea, or we think it's a bad idea. And you end up with a lot of ammunition to make a good recommendation. And you end up with a lot of ammunition to make a good recommendation or to make a good decision.
I would say the biggest downside really is that it does add a layer of complexity, right? There's a layer of complexity both in the city being involved at all, even though there's not really risk to the city. But it does add some complexity to the, that development process. And also ultimately adds some complexity for the property owner, right? Because now they are paying for, you know, this other assessment component. And so it's, it's a little bit of a, a layering on top of that. And so that would be the major downside. The upside is that it does, as we mentioned earlier, it's a, it's a risk reduction mechanism for the developer, right? And so it is incentivizing the developer to bring, to take a risk that they otherwise wouldn't. Mostly a financial risk for themselves because they're able to share that directly, more directly with the, the property owners that are benefiting.
Do you think that that it, people would shy away from, from purchasing homes in a development that has a PIT?
Usually I'd say, my typical answer for this is the market kind of drives that, right? So these folks are going to outlay a considerable amount to build all that infrastructure, put those houses up. The banks that are lending them the funding will say yes or no based on some pretty strong metrics. So...
Yeah, because I mean, you know, we've been through some workshops related to explaining a PIT. And it's pretty complicated. How do you think homeowners are going to understand that?
So in a mud, and we can, we can require that this be the same for a PIT. When you buy that house, you have a sheet, a paper on your purchase that says you are buying in a special district. There is a separate assessment that goes along with this property. Now, I know, because I recently bought a house, that stack of papers is getting bigger and bigger each year, every time you buy. But that really is the tool. Like you are buying a property in that. When the, when they sell the property, the realtors are supposed to indicate that you're buying in a mud district or you're buying in a, whatever this, whatever special district that would be. So they, the buyers certainly have to do their due diligence, right? They're informed of that information when they buy it and should be informed of it as they're looking to buy it.
And Brenna, I'll tell you from, from, from a business standpoint, we don't have the special districts in, in Kerr County. But when we're working with buyers or people in other counties, we are, a title company is required to provide that information, the amount of the assessment per year. We have to talk to the entity and they have to know that at closing, they have to sign that. So, I mean, there's, I mean, the knowledge is, is out, is, you know, I don't know enough from the real estate perspective, but I mean, they, there has to be actual knowledge when they...
Yeah, my concern would be if it's a deterrent, you know?
Yeah, that would be market, market force, yeah.
Market driven and where, someplace where the housing isn't there and you want to live there, that you would look at it over a long period of time, that it would be worth being able to have that house.
Yeah, it's just a personal...
Like an HOA, right? So some HOAs are $20 a year and that's a small fee and some are $600, $700 a year depending on, you know, how strong it is. And so you're making that choice to decide to be there.
Well, yeah, you know, and, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because there is, and this may be apples to oranges, but there is a neighborhood right now that I thought was in a PIT because of the fact that the street, even though they're in the city, their streets are not, the developer opted for the city to not maintain the streets in this neighborhood, okay? Well, those homes have, a lot of those homes have since sold from the original buyers. And the new people coming in, buying those homes, don't know that the streets are not maintained by the city. So you guys are getting phone calls, why is my street not being maintained? And it's because the developer decided that they were going to opt out of having the city maintain those streets. And I don't know how it works. I don't, you know...
Gated communities is how it typically works.
Is that what it is?
You have a gated community, it's not public access, so it's not a public street or public infrastructure. That's typically what you see with private streets if they're gated.
Okay, and, and none of this would be gated? Or it might be?
It could be.
So if it, if it's gated, it will not have, I, I don't believe, and I may be speaking out of turn here, the PIT is not able to pay for private infrastructure. So if there's a gated portion of a community, that street infrastructure could not be a part of the, the PIT bonding piece. So the developer would have to cover that on their own.
Okay.
So it's only public infrastructure.
Only public infrastructure.
Got it.
So we would be looking at larger developers?
Well, that's again, a question for y'all, so...
But probably...
I put a number, I just put a number up there, you know, 100 acres.
Probably we would be.
Given the administrative burden and the complexity that this adds, we, we would recommend that these are only applicable for larger projects. And we can help define some parameters there, but we want, we want confirmation from council on that through policy. And that way we can guide the development community. So if they are a smaller one, we could say, hey, this is a lot of trouble. We recommend, council's already recommended, you really don't even go that route.
So in your research, you're seeing like that example, eight, 50 acre minimum? Is that something that's being driven by staff through what you've researched and kind of what y'all's thoughts are? Like at this point coming forward to us?
We really just kind of threw that against the wall as an example. You know, we, we can define it a lot of different ways. We can define it by, you know, a certain size of residential lots. We could define it by a certain acreage. We could divine it by a certain potential property valuation of overall build out. There, there's a lot of different ways we could slice this. We just really wanted to get the initial feedback from you all to say, you know, if y'all wanted to say no, it's open to all development, then, then that's a certain direction. We need to be able to build into the policy. If you want to, you know, give us at least some loose parameters, we can, we can start to work with that.
Do you what, know what the norm is for parameters in other cities?
I really don't know that we have one.
I, I mean, I, we could survey, we could certainly survey that, but it's not standard. And, and kind of each city is different. Some are landlocked to, you know, smaller areas or surrounded already by other tracts. I would imagine it'd be somewhere akin to 50 to 100 acres would be, you'd want to have, you'd want to have something like that as a minimum. In addition, the, the, the cost of the review of their PIT, which, right, as remember, we're using for, for now, we're using Munichap to help us with those reviews is going to be somewhere between, and we're looking at the costs of those statewide between 15 and $25,000 just for the initial upfront cost of that.
To the developer.
To the developer.
To the developer.
Absolutely nowhere, yeah, it's to the developer, to, through us, to Munichap.
But that's why, one of the reasons they're so popular around a, a large city, because you take David Weekly, you take all of the big, big builders, they can, they can support that cost. And they've got, they've got the developments there to do that. Where we haven't, we're not set up with that type of development.
Yeah, so would it be, would it be a really good idea for a five acre development? Probably not, right? Even a 20 acre development. Could be, probably not, right? How much public infrastructure is going to be included in that? We would probably want skirted public infrastructure along the edges of those developments anyway, as much as we could. So this really would be a lot of your larger tracts where there's going to be significant public infrastructure that's going to have to go in.
Mayor, can I? What do y'all want from us tonight? Here's why I'm asking. This is a very complicated financial instrument. And you're asking for parameters on an instrument that at least one council member has a very thin grasp of.
Sure, absolutely.
So how can we, how can we give you direction?
It's like asking me for the flight plan of Apollo 11. I don't know. Go at night?
No, and I understand, this is, so it certainly is, I mean, it's, like you asked a question earlier and I was grasping for an answer. Cause there's some complicated parts to all of this.
Would it be appropriate to say, if this council says, you know, we think we ought to have a policy on PITS, but we would want staff recommendation on what those parameters should be?
So...
A secondhand motion.
I'm not going to sit here and try to give you parameters because we haven't studied it like you have. We haven't been in conversations like you have. We don't have the resources to look at other municipalities as you have. I, I'm just trying to figure out what you want from us tonight.
I, I think the biggest thing today is, is getting some high level guidance from you all. If you all want us to continue to track on PITS and provide sort of staff recommendation on certain sizing and, and parameters there, that's really what we need on in-city muds versus out-of-city muds. If, if in-city muds, for instance, are off the table and, and you don't want us to, to be able, or you don't want us to have that within the policy guidance because of political ramifications or other pieces, then we, we, we want to know we're not tracking down the wrong path here on a very broad level. We can dig into some more details.
I think on one council person's opinion, PITS are a lot closer on the table than muds are. MUDs may be on the very edge of the table.
Sure.
Teetering.
Sure.
And so I think that, you know, is, is something we need...
I don't know that, I, I mean, I don't speak for...
Sure, well, that's why we're, that's part of what we're asking, right? So...
So basically it's just, yes, we would like for you to do some more investigating or forget this.
Yeah, and so we've got, we have drafted, you know, kind of draft PIT policies, draft mud policies. At this point, there's no other policies, you know, because again, they won't really crop up unless it's like a once in a blue moon thing.
You do have drafts, Houston?
I'm working on them right now. I don't, you know, because we're, well, my plan is for us to have these back to you in a few weeks, right? And so a lot of this was driven by, you know, we, we really want to have kind of some guidance, if not answers, guidance on kind of, you know, do you want us to continue working through this? Do you want us to set some minimum requirements for size? And we can give you some parameters in there and say typically we're going to see 50 or 100 acres. Y'all decide you want to set, set it at 50, set it at 100, we can do that as we move forward. The valuations, we don't want to make assumptions. We're staff, right? So if I say...
You're also the experts on this.
Yeah, but I, but if I say it's 50 cents, you know, per hundred dollar valuation as an equivalent, that's a different thing than, than the, I don't make policy. I just ask you guys to help us understand.
The only thing that seems to be the, the clear path forward at this point is the third party administration piece. I mean, I think that's, that's what I'm hearing from you guys specifically, that that's what we want to, what's the way we want to head on that. For me, as a council person, I want to have a policy that allows from circumstances in which, you know, but for these kinds of mechanisms, this kind of development may not come forward and it's beneficial to the city. So that's, you know, that's my direction. And mine would be yes, on larger acreage. I don't know what that number is. And mine would say yes to, to make sure the valuation, you know, doesn't more than double what, what it is now. I don't know about terms or anything like that. But, but for me, the idea that there are certain situations where this could be beneficial for the city and help bring development that couldn't come another way, I'm on board with that.
Another question. You don't have, we don't, you, we...
You can say me.
There's no one, there's no one knocking at the door right now asking for this. And, and I, it's not that you need to give me a yes or no there, but we, there's no reason for us within the next month to have all of this in place. Is there, is there somebody out there knocking that's saying?
In the development community, the answer to the develop, the, if you ask a developer, when, when, you know, when can you have this done? They want it yesterday and that's the development community.
But we don't have to have a policy in place to, to entertain a PIT.
No, you don't. I think what it, what it does is it provides, it provides them and it provides us with the ability to say, here, here is what's been agreed to. Here are the mechanisms that we want you to go through.
That way we're not capricious.
Yeah, and, and, and we also don't want to take liberties with, you know, how things are coming across and, and whether one application comes through differently than another one. If we have a standard we can set for each of them, here's what you do, yeah, here's what you can do.
But if we take a couple of weeks, a month, to make that, we're, we're, it's not like we've got somebody saying, I really, really want to do this and, and we feel like we need guidelines today.
No, not, not specific guidelines today. Ultimately, what's going to happen, you know, the, we're going to have a developer at some point that's going to drop a petition of consent on our door for a mud or a PIT or some other mechanism. And so it's helpful for us to have a policy in place before then. So that we either prevent that from happening if it's a mechanism that we don't really desire or, you know, at a minimum, provide some guidance so they're not, they're not on their own side getting too far down the road on a, a particular ask before they, 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 they can have guidance, just like staff can have guidance.
Well, and let me take another step into that. If they were to do that, is there a certain timeline that we have to respond to them and provide approval or decline?
So for a mud, there's a statutory number. It's 90 days is my understanding of that for the mud. For a PIT, there is none, none, you know. We want to be as sort of, you know, what I always tell developers is we'll work as fast as we can. But you understand that you're, if this is not your first rodeo, you know what's going to happen. We're going to talk, deliberate, and we're probably going to talk and deliberate a little more. And we'll come to a conclusion and that's what it'll be and when it will be, so.
Roman, any, anything you'd like to add to them or your, your viewpoint?
Yeah, no, nothing too much more to add. Again, I, I don't know too much about it. I'm not an expert in this. I would like to get some more information on what other cities who have put similar requirements similar to Kerrville to kind of, I know y'all, you, you do that when you give comparisons when we're doing other policies. Something like that would be helpful to see. And if you want to bring that to us when you have a kind of draft document for us, that way we can take a look at the draft and then take a look at what other cities are doing and see if we want to change anything in that to kind of start moving forward. That's, that's all I got though. I, I do like all the kind of guidelines that you had on the previous page. I like those though, taking a look at those, make sure we have those in place.
Kim, you want to add anything on the PIT?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I agree with Roman in that we should have, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. And if there are other municipalities that have a good plan, a good set of guidelines, we should lean a little bit on something that works.
I'm very good at plagiarizing and very good at doing it where someone's already done it well.
And obviously looping in, Kerrville 2050 and what our, our citizens have told us they want.
Thank you, that's all.
Brenna?
Oh, good, okay, so I think...
So there's another component to it, it's just...
Mud as well.
Yeah, and we'll go into the mud, yeah.
I just want to take a quick second and recognize, we've got one of our interns in, in the room right now, Mr. Zane Brown. And Zane has actually been helping us all throughout the summer. He's a graduate of the Texas A&amp;M Bush School and he's been helping us as a management intern and doing survey work for mud and PIT policies around the state and really helping us differentiate a, a number of communities that have worked through this already. And so we are plagiarizing, as we talked about earlier, heavily from their policies and making sure that those fit Kerrville in, in pulling together some draft...
Lanes the maroon check shirt to you.
Yeah, there you go. He's sporting the colors today, so. Anyway, just want to give him a little bit of kudos for the hard work he's provided for us.
Thank you. All right, muds.
Muds, all right, let's continue this exciting discussion. I know, we'll get, we're going to get, we're going to work our way through it. So the, for us, the, the two distinctions to be made in muds is there's in-city muds and there's ETJ muds, right? And the in-city muds are, again, within the corporate city limits of, of the city of Kerrville. Those require the consent of the city council to be created. An ETJ mud requires that they ask. And if the council says no, they take that request to TCEQ and TCEQ says yes or no. Typically, I think they say yes. So you have more control of the creation of a mud district inside the city limits as opposed to in the ETJ. So you can decide.
Remind me, if we were to say yes, they don't have to go to TCEQ?
They do still have to get approval.
So that goes, the entire process for muds goes through TCEQ.
And they can still say yes or no, right? Cause they're the final authority, I guess, in...
Except for in-city.
Right, right. If the city says no... That's what I'm referring to right now, yeah.
That's exactly right, yeah. So in either case, yes or yes.
So why do they even, if they're in the ETJ, why do they even come to the city if, you know, we don't have any muscle?
Cause we can annex it.
It's, it is required by state law for them to basically come to the city and ask for consent. Either way, that, that information is then taken to TCEQ and TCEQ makes a final determination.
Kind of like, I guess, our relationship with P and Z and city council during some of our CUPs and, and those kind of things when they give a, kind of a recommendation and either they get to appeal or it comes to councils, a recommendation, we say yes or no.
That's right.
And we do have, we've got a number of mechanisms within our subdivision code for extension of utilities and infrastructure. And so there, there's a little bit of check and balance there in regards to entities that, that want to... And so, um, there, there's a little bit of check and balance there, uh, in regards to, uh, entities that, that want to create developments within our ETJ, uh, as far as what their, what their requirements are. However, again, it, 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 we, we have less latitude, uh, in the ETJ than we do, we have outright ability to deny.
I was gonna say, they can override our-
Ultimately, TCQ can override, that's right, in the ETJ.
Yeah.
So in a PID, the, uh, city council can name, you know, themselves as kind of the advisory to that. In a mud, it's the property owners, uh, and they elect thems, they elect themselves. The property owners create the initial board for, uh, municipal utility for a mud. And then, once the property continues to develop, it is the owners of the properties within the mud that govern the tax rate that they set. Um, there are ways that we can limit that, um, within the city, with the development agreement. But thinking about it in terms of, in, in-city mud, you have basically a separate board that is inside your city limits, right? That is setting a rate for, uh, for the bond repayments, and, um, and so it's a little bit more complicated that you have to go to TCQ for the creation. It's a little more complicated in that you have, uh, the creation of an entirely new board that is separate and apart from the city council, so.
What does exactly, what does that board say? What, what are, what's their limit of authority?
So there's a couple of different things to consider. Their, 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 their ability to, um, put out debt for water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, it's a lot of the same things that you would have within a PID, right? And the board sets the rate to cover the INS debt service and the M&amp;O for that. So it's not that they set, they don't have to set a minimum. They can kind of set their own rate. So it can be in conflict with us periodically. Part of what I've heard so far in cities is kind of you're fighting with a mud district as a city council, um, typically because you're gonna have public safety services. A lot of these are in the ETJ for the cities. And so they'll be working through just a lot of management issues. So, again, within the city, a mud, um, creates a separate council, more or less, um, board. And in the ETJ, um, it, it does also do that, but we have some limitations as far as if you're connecting on to the city limits. That requires annexation to begin with.
That's right.
Right, so.
Can I ask a question? So all these conversations I hear that PIDs are, are certainly more, um, the friend of the city, it sounds like to me, when I'm hearing presentations. Is that, I mean, is that?
It provides more, what, what, um, our assessment, the, the, the difference between the two, the, um, the PID allows for more control by the city council, uh, overall, in the structure of the way that, that, um, that, that debt for that infrastructure is created, and then paid for, and then also the phasing of that. And it gives, uh, opportunity for the council, multiple bites, if, uh, to, to alter that, if there's something that needs to be changed as the development goes on. With the mud process, it really has to be, you've gotta nail it from the get-go, because it's all part of that initial agreement. Because once you have ceded that control over to now this separate political jurisdiction, they're in charge of it. And so both in setting that tax rate, as well as, um, you know, paying for that, uh, those services and that debt over time, and so.
So that's the, that's what, that's what's more appealing to a developer, that control piece.
It can be, um, you know, the other piece, too, is, uh, yes.
Possibly. I mean, I'm trying to see, like, if, if we, if we say we don't wanna do one, what's the, wha- why would a developer choose one over the other, I guess, as a mechanism?
They, they, they do have more control over a mud process. They're also, um, uh, typically, they can have control of that mud, uh, as the actual developer for a extended period of time, until a certain percentage of those, uh, properties are actually sold.
Like an HOA type thing.
Exactly.
'Cause they'll still own half of that land for quite a while.
Yeah.
Right, because it's building out.
So hopefully, everything is, is, is decided upfront, so that you don't get into conflicts with that mud board later on.
What conflicts are we talking about? If, like, the neighborhood says, oh, my water's too high, or my, my assessment, or my, my tax is too high, you just refer them back to the people that they've elected, don't you? In other words, they can't yell at us, they have to yell at that board.
They can.
Can.
Should they? Are they directing it in the right way? No.
Or back to say, you've elected this mud dis, this, I mean, this fully utility district?
Yeah.
Off of them.
What about the, the timing on that? Like, when does the mud district go away, or does it go away?
It's also a big part of it, it's about the retirement of the debt and, and overtime, and, um, is it, you know, and that can be, depending on how the mud is, is actually initiated, right? And so is it only for the initial infrastructure? Is it for maintenance of some of that infrastructure over time? Um, you know, there can be operational pieces that, that those muds can stick around for longer, uh, than just the initial duration of the infrastructure.
So as an example, we don't have drainage that we maintain, that's privately maintained, so we would want some maintenance in operation to cover the cost of that throughout time. That ends up being kind of a fight, because the, the mud will say, well, we wanna dissolve completely. We want no part of that any longer. And, well, that's a disagreement between the two boards there. And you can try to mitigate a bunch of that stuff upfront, but again, like Yea was saying, unless you ca, unless you capture that, you just missed a thing, so.
I think there can also be a lot of confusion. You asked about pros and cons earlier. Um, I think Abdi mentioned, uh, in his presentation, Municap, uh, a couple of weeks ago. There, there can be maybe a little bit more confusion, I think, on, particularly on the homeowner's side, um, because it is a, uh, it's an additional tax. And so, um, while the assessment, um, you know, is additional resource, it, it really is kind of separated out, and it's very, uh, it's very well-defined, uh, as opposed to muds, which are, you know, it's gonna fluctuate based off evaluation of property. And so there can be a little bit of, um, confusion sometimes on the property taxpayer, and really reckon, well, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm paying city taxes, but I'm also paying these mud taxes, and what, what are these for? And, and it, it can become quite confusing, I think.
So again, with the, with each one of these policies, they're roughly the same in terms of, there's gonna be some minutia in there that's, here's what's required by law for muds, especially, um, here are the things that we wanna look at. For us, what we, what we're asking of you to include into that minutia is, what are those things, right? So a lot of the same conversation. If someone drops a mud petition on the city of Kerrville, what are the things that we want them pointing to, to say, these are requirements? These are things that you have to at least meet before the city would consider creating any of these special improvement districts. So it's kind of duplicative. I mean, 'cause I think what you probably want in a mud is roughly the same as what you would want in a PID. So we don't have to rehash that conversation. One of the things that, uh, that, that we did see, and, um, I thought it was germane to this discussion, is, um, some restrictions on the senior housing that you would put into a public improvement district. Not to a public improvement district, to a mud district. And restricting that to ten to twenty percent, because of the tax freeze implications on those properties. And why would you include that in there to fifty to seventy-five to a hundred percent of the creation of that? So you're creating, uh, you're creating a scenario where that entire development's gonna be tax-frozen right off the bat, um, and you're kind of helping to create that. And so li, just limiting the scope, possibly, of, of the inclusion of senior housing to ten to twenty percent of a particular development inside of a mud district.
I mean, the second, the first homeowners, maybe, but the second homeowners, you can't say who can and cannot buy that home, can you?
This would be a scenario where, for instance, if you had a thousand-unit development, and the developer was specifically looking at, say, fifty percent of that was going to be truly, uh, age-restricted, uh, like a fifty-five-plus neighborhood, um, you know, the, the, if they were asking for one of these mechanisms, you all have the opportunity within the politics to say, no, that's not appropriate. Um, your development can only be a maximum of ten percent of housing units that can be age-restricted, uh, or whatever, whatever percentage you all feel is appropriate. Uh, you may say, these mechanisms aren't appropriate for age-restricted housing, period. Uh, and so they, all your houses just have to be open, open-market, uh, you know, component, and so.
Is that the covenants or something? How would you enforce that after, in five years after homes have, you know, had more than one owner, as new owners?
Well, it's more like, I think, more like a community, like a restricted community.
Yeah, it's when you have deed, it's a deed-
You can only live there for a minute.
Yeah, it's a deed-restricted, uh, like a fifty-five-plus deed-restricted type community.
And we can't do it with, uh, under sixty-five.
No, and, yeah, the law prohibits that.
I still gotta get that done someday.
So I, I think, I think a lot of what we wanted to get out of today in talking to you is to say, you know, are we on the right track with the things that we're looking at? You know, we, we understand that we can't think through all the, every single point, and we wanna make sure we're not missing something in there to include. A lot of what we'll look at in these policies is pointing to, what are cities of our size, and our sort of geographic area, that, what policies do they have? How does that not fit within Kerrville, and let's amend that so that it makes sure it fits Kerrville? But by and large, A, B, C, and D are policy recommendations that have, that have been put through and passed. And we can bring you those examples as well.
Yeah, that's a repeat of Councilman Garcia's request to have some semblance of not reinventing the wheel and all of this stuff.
No, we don't want to.
And if there's something, again, if, if there is a, a piece of this, or an overarching, uh, element that is just off the table, it's bet, it's good for us to know it now, because then we'll build it into the policy.
So, same deal, uh, talking about the limits, so we know where to go with that direction, so we'll bring that back to y'all. And with that, other special districts, again, there are so many different versions of these that are probably never gonna come through, right? So a lot of them are elected through a vote of the citizens, Crime Control Prevention District, things like that. So until those one-off scenarios, uh, make our way, we know that we're getting requests for either of these two districts, so creating a policy for them seems like a prudent idea. I don't wanna spin everybody's wheels on random, uh, other districts at this point, so. With that, I think what we'll probably do is bring back a draft policy September thirteenth council meeting. I think we can probably get you something before then, um, and some, some drafts as well from other cities.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, one of the things we talked about when, uh, well, uh, before, I think even you were with us, was when we get big draft documents, to get those at least a week in advance of the meeting, instead of just on the Friday that the whole agenda packet goes out.
Hundred percent.
There's not enough time.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I mean, that doesn't give you a lot of time.
Even a week, right? Yeah.
We can get it done.
Yeah.
Get it done?
Yeah, but with the understanding that some things may still be changed.
Sure, yeah, just to start looking at something.
But just a rough draft.
Something to actually look at.
I agree.
Okay, Brenda, any need to add? Joe? Roman?
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we'll look forward to.
More to come?
More to come.
As we come.
All right, are y'all confused? I'm confused.
Are we having workshop on this before that, or no?
We just did, I mean.
We just had the-
For the, for like the policy part? All right, I'm just making sure that September thirteenth, that's the next time we're gonna be looking at this, right?
At the earliest.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see. We're, that, we're trying to work that into our staff schedule, um, and, and probably what we'll do is, um, have that on, uh, consideration, uh, agenda for you all. Uh, and if you're not ready to take action fully on it that night, but at least you can, uh, be able to take votes on certain pieces of it, and tell us, guide us, and direct us on, on any redrafting that you may need to do.
Okay.
Or that we may need to do.
I just make it clear for staff and for developers.
Yes, we hear Roman.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, at this time, we will, with a motion, we will recess and reconvene to a executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to go into executive session for items three A and three B, under sections five, five, one, point zero, seven, one, zero, seven, two, and zero, eight, seven.
All right.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand, approved. And at five oh four, we will convene in executive session upstairs.
Thank you.